Hey Chair, Jordan Bogie for the record, Senior Policy Analyst with the Clark County Council. Really excited to have everyone here in person and virtually today for this Legislative Priorities meeting. And so I will sort of be co-facilitating here with Josh and Annika, our lobbyists, to move this along. But I think where we wanted to start with this conversation was doing some introductions. So over the last few years, you know, some retirements, some new folks on the councils, some new folks in the delegation, redistricting has happened. And so, you know, we'd love for folks to be able to introduce themselves, where they're from, you know, their names, their titles. But we'd also like for folks to share what motivates them to serve as a legislator or counselor and what you're hoping to accomplish in your role in the next year, just so folks have a little bit of a chance to get to know each other a little bit more in-depth as we kind of reestablish this connection between our county council and our legislative delegation.
I also just would add that we do have some substantive issue areas that council has identified that are going to be important for them this legislative session, but part of the reason we're focusing more on introductions as well is that we don't have a capital budget ask we're coming to you for. We don't have anything with real fine point specificity that we really need to talk with you about today. And so the relationship building is really the most important part of the agenda. We do have some substantive areas, but just want to make sure that you're not sort of worried about, okay, when are we going to get to the rest of the agenda? We are interested in what you're thinking about as well. So a little extra context there. Thanks, Jordan.
Great. So then, as far as introductions go, why don't we start with the county council? So Chair, if you don't mind, maybe we'll start with you.
I'd be delighted.
You can share just a little bit about yourself, what district you represent, what motivates you to serve as a counselor, and what you're hoping to accomplish in your role in the next year.
Thank you so much. You know, I grew up in Kansas, and my first job was working when I was in high school for the governor of the state, and that's what got me interested in the political process. And I never have given it up since then, and always find that it is a way to contribute like none other. And I bet that many of you feel the same way because you are doing this too. And it is not that it is something that comes easily necessarily. People disagree with us, they even call us names. And yet, it is something that we know is an important contribution and that we can make a difference. So those are some of the reasons, I mean, this goes so far back in my own history. We then moved to the great Northwest just about eight years ago, and I am delighted to be a part of this community because, again, I see a great opportunity to serve. And a friend of mine once told me, you know, Karen, one of the things that I'm inspired by is the people who don't just think these things about how they would like to contribute, but that they show up. And she said, "You are someone," and I think she could have been pointing to each one of you, "who shows up and tries to make the difference and works at it until we do." And congratulations and thank you for doing that. I could talk just a little bit, I guess, about what I would hope to see happen. I know you've been reading in the newspapers in the last, just in the last few days about Ridgefield's interest with Costco coming there and maybe an In-N-Out Burger and certainly a lot of new homes. They're interested in having an additional route to Interstate 5. And I know I have personally had a strong interest because of congestion primarily and dealing with that, in an interest in a new corridor and something that really gives advantage to the county and to the cities that it serves. So I'd like to see us pursue communications on this and how we could be of mutual advantage. So with that, I turn it over to others on the council. Gary Midvigi, are you here? You're our vice chair.
I am, thank you.
Please go ahead.
Too much to say and not enough time to say it, but I think most of you've gotten to know me already. Spent a lifetime in public service and mainly in rule of law areas, criminal justice, overseas, just want to help. Been involved in reforming government, for governments from Bosnia to Afghanistan. Clark County could use some of the reform. And I know that our legislative delegation is a great partnership with us, and it's something certainly outside of our sphere of real control, but maybe some influence. And so I just want to say, number one, I'm hoping that we can partner on ideas that you have, because I always want Clark County to set the standard, you know, to be a model for the rest of the state. So if there's a priority you have that we can help with, I want to hear it because I do want to partner on it. And I want to go off script a little bit, we do have a legislative agenda, but Glenn and I were just on the state DHS opioid call this morning, and it just kind of focused, continuing focus for me in a lot of areas. And one is that we have a dire need, and many places in the state do, but it really got kicked around last legislative session. Our jail services, our jails, you know, there's some misdirection. You know, we don't need more oversight and standards, what we need is help. And, you know, we're paying fines every day because of the lack of restoration services. We have a jail, we have people in it, need to be restored. We want to build our mental health and addiction services. Behavioral health is, you know, 60% of our jail population, it's pretty much the same in every jail. So I'd really like the legislature to refocus on it. So there's a nexus in all of this, from building our jail services, our funding, different funding streams that we've seen, the ability to grant some relief to the state, and our ability to stop the slaughter with our addicts in our communities. And fentanyl's a prime leader in that. It's a crisis, and if you haven't gotten that, I'm hoping you do. So from criminal justice reform, you need to readdress the Blake decision. You're almost there, and it's not about incarcerating people, it's about involuntary treatment that they need and they don't want to save their lives. So putting those services within our local jails, licensing our addiction services, our mental health care within the jails, and then having a transition to our community is of primary importance for public safety, you name it. We can benefit all of our state by putting more emphasis into our jail services. Thanks for that paid political announcement.
Counselor Young, you want to introduce yourself next?
Sure. Counselor Young, I'm a general contractor by trade. I've done mostly remodel work my career, dabbled in and built several ADUs downtown in the last few years. That's not really happening now because I've got a job that's very consuming, but I've got five kids, oldest is 19, living in Anacortes. The other four are six, eight, 10, and 14, so are busy with that. And the reason that I'm sitting where I am today is because Clark County has afforded me a good life, it really has, it's been there for me. Was able to start a successful business, able to raise kids in a good, welcoming and safe environment, and really my desire is to extend that opportunity to my kids because there are so many pressures coming in that are making life difficult for everybody that's living here. And so that is my primary driver, is just to make any subtle difference that I can to make this community stronger, and it starts here, collaboration with our partners. We can't get anything done really without that partnership and working together. So I appreciate everybody being willing to take the time to be here today.
Hello, I'm Counselor Michelle Belkot. I'm District Two, which is Salmon Creek, Manyha Ha, Hazel Dell, out to Five Corners and Falida. I served in the military for 25 years collectively in the Navy and the Air Force. I was enlisted in the Air Force and commissioned as an officer in the Navy. I grew up in Clark County. I returned here about nine years ago when my husband retired from the military. As a result of COVID, that really inspired me on different, many levels to run for office. And I'm a freshman, so I've learned absolutely a ton in almost the last year. So I just really care about Clark County, I'm invested. I went to all the public schools here, and it's been a great experience, and I'm learning a lot, so thank you.
Well, why don't we start with maybe the delegation folks online, and then we'll transition to the folks in the room? Senator Braun, would you like to kick us off?
Sure, thank you. So here's an echo. So John Braun, I'm the State Senator for the 20th Legislative District, which is, goes from just south of Olympia and Dumwater to down to Ridgefield. And with the redistricting, I've always had a little bit of Clark County, now I represent a significant larger portion of Clark County. My wife and I live up here just outside Centralia. We have four children, all grown now and out of the house. And I have been in the legislature for, this will be my 12th year in 2024, and I've served the whole time on Ways and Means, including eight years as a budget negotiator, and then vice chair and chair, and then ranking member of the Senate Ways and Means Committee, and then I've had the good fortune to serve as the leader of the Senate Republican Caucus for the last three years. I also serve on the Labor and Commerce Committee and on the Housing Committee. Next.
Senator Wilson, why don't we go to you next?
To say who you follow, following it to, volleying, there we go. Senator Linda Wilson, I am the Senator from the 17th Legislative District, which now includes Eastern Clark County and all of Skamania County. I have been in the legislature for over nine years now, served two years in the House and the remainder seven years now, does that have it? Yeah, two in the Senate. I am on Ways and Means and Law and Justice. I am the Republican Leader on the Ways and Means Committee. And I have been living here in Clark County for over 50 years. My father retired here in the Air Force when he was in the Air Force. I have three grown daughters also out of the house, and now I have six grandkids, four grandsons and two granddaughters. And so I guess just quickly, I ran for office basically because I wanted to see accountability and government responsibility, to be accountable to those of us that look to the government. And I guess it frustrated me that I lived outside the city, and I'm also a family, we have a family business inside of, used to be the 17th, and now are on the side of the street where it's the 49th. So a lot of things happening with the city that I couldn't, that I didn't have the opportunity to vote on, so I thought, well, okay, I would like my voice to be heard, so here I am. Big issues for me this coming session is adding fentanyl. We have a, we have too many kids overdosing, little teeny kids overdosing from fentanyl, and this is just from living in the homes and overdosing on either the ingestion of the pills or the inhalation of the smoke. And right now, fentanyl is not part of the statute, and so what we're, what I'm trying to do is add fentanyl and other synthetic opioids back to the statute or into the statute that was created in 2005 when methamphetamines, when they were doing the cooking and all children were overdosing from the smoke of cooking the meth in the homes. And so this will give us an ability to hold accountable those that are overdosing our kids. Right, 2021, we had 25 kids here in Clark County alone overdose, and in 2023, two, we had 46. And I don't know what the numbers are yet, I know that I'm working across the state to get those numbers, but it was the Clark County prosecuting attorneys that worked for the Children's Justice Center that contacted me a year ago and asked me to run this bill. And it is now a number one bill for the Washington Association of Prosecuting Attorneys as well as the Children's Justice Centers across the state. So I'm hoping that we can get this bill passed this year. It sailed out of the Senate last year and died in the House. The House said that their caucus couldn't support the bill, so we're working on trying to change their minds and hope that we can actually do this so that our kids have a chance. So clearly, the parents are not making good decisions in overdosing their children, and we need to be able a way to help them to address their addictions. And I continually work on the Tiffany Hill Act that we passed four years ago. We all know what happened down here, the tragedy that happened in November of 2019. And we're working very hard to get this implemented throughout the state, working with judge associations. There's now a work group because of another bill that passed last year to try to get this implemented throughout the state. And so working with AOC, Administration of Courts, to have this happen. We did get a little bit of money in $2 million to help those counties that are actually using the system. I don't want money to be in the way of someone not getting that electronic monitoring with a victim notification. So public safety is a big deal for us this year, I think. We have a whole lot of things wrong with this state. We're breaking records that we shouldn't be breaking. We're number one in retail theft, we're number two in car thefts, and it can go on. So I'll stop now and let others talk, but we'll have probably further conversations. Thank you.
Representative Harris, do you want to go ahead and go?
Representative Paul Harris, been in the legislature for 13 years, was elected in 2010, started serving in 2011. Been a resident of Clark County for 45 years, I've been in the 17th District for 44 years. I have five grown children, I have nine grandchildren. The committees I serve on are the Healthcare Committee, which I've been on the entire time I've been in the legislature, education, off and on, but I'm back on education, been there for a while, and appropriations, I'm the caucus chair. Ran for office after being on the Evergreen School Board. I was on the Evergreen School Board from 1991 to 2001. I've always been fascinated with policy. Healthcare's probably been my most important issue, and going into this session, some of my priorities line up with yours, I'm very concerned about homelessness and fentanyl. Look forward to working with you on the homeless issue, and we still have some work to be done there, and just look forward to hearing your agenda items and working with you as we move forward. Hey, thank you so much.
So I think that's everybody online, unless there's people we can't see.
Not seeing yet.
You've got Annette and Monica that I can see.
Oh, okay, we can't see them, I'm so sorry. Senator Cleveland, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you. Hello, everyone, it's good to be joining you again this year. I'm Annette Cleveland. I serve as a state senator representing the 49th Legislative District, which encompasses most of America's Vancouver and parts of Clark County, including Hazel Dell. I currently sit on the Senate Health and Long-Term Care Committee, as well as the Senate Transportation Committee, Senate Housing Committee, and the Senate Rules Committee. And what motivates me to serve is the fact that I was born and raised here in this community, and I've spent the majority of my career working in the public policy arena. I was a congressional staff person for over 12 years, and then went more specifically into healthcare policy, worked for a hospital-based healthcare system and government affairs for over 14 years. And what truly motivates me, aside from my constituents here in this community, is the fact that I believe to my core in our democracy, I believe in our legislative process, and I serve because I want to model civility, I want to model respect, I want to demonstrate that we can, together in a bipartisan way, productively solve problems. And I feel fortunate to have this privilege of serving, serving with my colleagues, many of whom are on this call, and really feeling as if we do continue to work together to move our state forward. So what I hope to accomplish in this next upcoming session, I want to ensure that we make continued progress in addressing our aging infrastructure, particularly our transportation infrastructure, specifically want to continue to make progress on replacement of the Interstate 5 Bridge, want to make continued progress on ensuring that Vancouver Lake continues to be an amenity that our community can enjoy, and have put effort toward the development of a strategic management plan for the lake, and want to continue to work with you collaboratively to ensure that we accomplish that goal and begin to manage that lake in a more proactive way rather than from crisis to crisis. And then I'm interested in this next session also work to identify additional resources for local governments, particularly when it comes to housing, recognize that housing, homelessness continues to be a challenge that we all struggle with. Want to also mention, as Chair of the Senate Health and Long-Term Care Committee, I also have responsibility for helping to set the agenda and the framework for healthcare in our state, and very much focused on, a lot of continued work around increasing access to behavioral health services. I'm working specifically on a bill to ensure that the use of telehealth continues to be streamlined and that access is available for patients, for those who need telehealth services. Want to work to address the workforce challenges that we face in healthcare. Of course, recognize we face workforce challenges in all sectors, but primarily I'm focused on healthcare. And then need to continue to move forward from the pandemic and rebuild a healthcare system that's stronger and even more resilient. So I'm really pleased to be with you again this year and look forward to talking about our priorities and how we can best support you in 2024 legislative session. Thanks.
Thank you, Senator. And Representative Stoney, are you able to join?
I think if everybody can hear me and see me, I think I'm on now. Okay, great, thank you. Monica Stoney, I represent the 49th Legislative District, along with Senator Cleveland, formerly represented the 17th Legislative District and served in the House with my former seatmate, Representative Harris. So certainly have some experience kind of serving in a legislative capacity, county, a good part of the county. I'm on the Healthcare Committee, I'm all of Paul Harris's committees, which is, I don't know that he likes that that much, but I'm also on the K-12 Committee. I've been a teacher in Evergreen Public Schools for over 24 years. We are on appropriations together as well, and both serve in our caucus leaderships. I'm the Majority Floor Leader, which means I work with folks to determine what will come to the floor for a vote and manage debate on the floor. All of that, I think, you know, maybe not the way it shows up in the papers and on the radio, is quite collaborative in a bipartisan way. So when I think about my priorities this session, I'm sure many of them have already been listed. I'm late to this meeting, and I apologize for that. I was, I'm co-chair of the Children's Council, which is a coalition of folks who work on early learning and childcare here in Clark County, and we are working to try and bring some solutions to the childcare crisis to you all for feedback. And the nexus of the fentanyl crisis obviously touches this issue, the nexus of whether or not people have homes to live in, and all of the things that I know have already been raised, all have a direct impact, are either impacted or can impact the access and availability of childcare. So yesterday, when we were visiting with the city, I mentioned that my job with our members of the House Leadership on the Democratic side is just to really try and keep a track, keep on track of what are all the proposals in a short 60-day session that are going to come on some of these very big issues. So I really see this today as an opportunity to kind of accordion down to the local level and share information and ideas that we should continue to catalog so that we can be as effective as possible and as well-informed as possible in the short time we have moving forward. So glad to be here and looking forward to the conversation and hearing from you all what you would like us to take to Olympia to work on for this legislative session. Thank you.
Thanks, Representative, just one last check, nobody else online, right? Okay, great. So let me see if I can do this. I believe Representative Orca, you... Well, I was going to go with longest-serving. I'm not going to, I'm not going to say oldest.
Go ahead, Sharon.
Okay, Representative Wiley, clearly you're the crowd favorite.
Newsflash, I'm the oldest.
Not the longest-serving, just the older of the crew.
Not quite. I represent the 49th, I'm Sharon Wiley. I have been in and out of government work and public service for about 35 years. I was a management consultant for many years where I would come in and fix systems that had become inefficient over time, and I would start new nonprofits and worked in small businesses. So I served two terms in the Oregon Legislature in the early 90s, and I was working out of this building from 1999 until 2008, I believe, as the county's lobbyist and government representative. So it's always interesting to have this, have this meeting. Currently, I'm on the Transportation Committee. My work has been focused on getting our bridge and making sure our transportation infrastructure all over the state works for our economy and for the people that it serves. I'm very interested in everything that people have said. The things that have been mentioned as priorities are right on the money. I also am, I've been on the Finance Committee for quite a long time, and our tax system is tweaked every session. There was a lot of mixed feelings amongst our members on what we need to do in that area, never boring. And this, last year, I became the, one of the chairs of the Regulated Substances and Gaming Committee. And this is the committee that implemented our 502 initiative for cannabis, and it's, we started that process about when I was appointed in 2011, and I originally served on that committee before I went over to the Transportation Committee. It's been over 10 years, and one of the reasons I am chairing is I want to use my management skills to look at our system and see what still makes sense. It was designed to pass, it was designed as a, first or second in the country. A lot of other states have come online, and there's a lot to be learned from folks that have come later. Regulated substances are regulated for a reason. They are recreational for some people and toxic for others. And so it's a balancing act to treat businesses that are legal with respect, reward people that follow the rules, and keep up to date on the, on knowledge that's emerging. So that's one of my focuses besides the I-5 Bridge. I also serve on the Economic Development Finance Authority, which works in the financing large structures and businesses for economic development purposes throughout the state. And I am the House Democratic Representative on the State Arts Commission, and I believe, I'm somebody who says steam when other people say stem, and I believe the arts are very, very important, and so that's, that's one of my heart projects. I've become very interested in the need throughout the state to pay attention to our water and sewer infrastructure. I've recently found out that every single county, rural and suburban and urban, has discovered human call farm in wells. Counties are responsible for inspecting septic systems throughout our state and wells. And I know from working for counties that counties are structurally unable to do all the things that are on their plate. The criminal justice system and a lot of other things take precedent. My first job when I moved from Seattle to Oregon was... My first job when I moved from Seattle to Oregon was working in the Mid-County Sewer Project where the whole area between Gresham and Portland was on septic systems, including large apartment complexes. We are, there's always going to be migration into this wonderful state and we are building a lot of dwellings, a lot of structures on lots that were built or designed for one family. And so I think that we need to pay, if we want to keep our, our salmon, give our salmon a chance, we need to pay attention to what's flowing downstream. We need to make sure our infrastructure is up to speed and doing infill development on 50-year-old sewer systems doesn't make sense to me. So I think we need a statewide solution and our Public Works Trust Fund is never going to be enough. And so that's, that's going to become a major focus. And I've started conversations. I've, I probably will be doing a lot of work during the interim on that. And that's a multi-year, multi-person task. So in the meantime, I do what I can to make sure our, our local governments. I was once, I was once the city administrator in Tuck Willa and I've worked for five or six counties in my career. So local government is near and dear to my heart and I understand how difficult it is to provide those services on the ground. So I try to keep that in the front of my mind as a legislator and I love the job. It's different every day. I learn something new all the time and it's a huge honor and I love it.
Awesome, thanks. Okay, I'm gonna try and go by longest-serving again. Well, make this attempt, Representative Orkut.
Thank you. Ed Orkut, State Representative, 20th District. As Senator Braun mentioned, we start south of Ridgefield, actually south of the fairgrounds and go north. We're actually from the city of Battleground. We don't have the city Battleground. We bump up against them and go north. We have East Galus County. We have everything in Lewis County, east of I-5, all the way to White Pass. And we include Tenino at Rainier and Buquota, Lake Lawrence in Thurston County. So our district is about 80-mile stretch of I-5, thereabouts. I've served in the legislature. This is my 22nd year, almost at my 22nd anniversary. I was appointed in January of 2002. And then I've run for reelection, served 11 years in the 18th District, which at the time had, oh, probably about 80% of the land area in Clark County. And even when I got redistricted into the 20th, we had, I think, 10,000 to 15,000 constituents in Clark County that entire time. But obviously it's considerably more now. I'm the ranking member on the House Finance Committee. That's a committee that I've been on my entire time in the legislature. I've been ranking on it much of the time I've been there. I did take about a five-and-a-half-year break from ranking on finance to be ranking on transportation. So I've been involved in writing transportation budgets. I was also involved in negotiating the Connecting Washington Package between 2013 and 15. And yes, it did take that long. It was actually started before I came on to it. I'm on, so I'm on, still on transportation. I've been on that committee for, yeah, pretty much as long as I've been in the 20th, 11 years. I'm also, as a, my day job, I'm consulting forester. So it's appropriate that I'm on the Ag and Natural Resources Committee. When Senator, when Representative Wiley talks about steam, I kind of think of agriculture as being the A in steam. So I think that's an important aspect. And we do still have some agriculture in Clark County and we need to continue to work to, to make sure that we protect that. Public safety is going to be a key issue for a lot of folks. Housing is a key issue for a lot of folks and things that we are going to be focused on working on in the legislature, trying to get some real solutions. In 2021, public safety went backwards a long way. We've, we've kind of moved the needle back a little bit, but it's got to come back a lot more. I understand the problems that a lot of local governments are having. And even our State Patrol is having recruiting and retaining officers. We actually had to increase our pay tremendously. And I think we increased pay for troopers about 30, 30, 33% over about a three-year period and we were starting to make gains on our, on our state troopers. And then between COVID and some of the other things that have happened with some of the legislation and other community actions that have taken place and sentiment that's taken place, we're below where we were before. And so we're seeing the same struggles that you're seeing at the local level. We, we recognize that. We want to do things to, to not only encourage them monetarily to come back or to come into the profession, but we need to make sure that, you know, when they do come into the profession, they can actually do their job and provide the public safety that, that they promised to protect. We make sure they have the tools to do that. I'm in support of tax relief. Since we left town in March or in, in April, when our budgets were written, they were based on the March forecast. Since that time, our revenues are coming in $3 billion more than what we anticipated. That is spread over a couple of biana, but they are coming in higher than we had before or were anticipating before. I'm on the Economic Revenue Forecast Council, have been for quite some time. I won't list everything I'm on because if I did, we would just adjourn the meeting when I got done. But as far as tax policy, you know, there, there are still proposals out there to increase taxes and I'm very concerned about any of those. And, you know, I kind of think this meeting should be about the county telling us what your priorities are, but if you're gonna ask me, I'm gonna tell you. One of my priorities is protecting the 1% and not going to the 3% increase in, in levies. That's something that I've worked on for a lot of years. In fact, was involved in reinstating that through the legislative process when the courts threw it out. So I'm gonna be very, very protective of the 1%. I'm gonna be very much opposed to anything that's going to increase taxes on, on anyone, whether it be on property taxes, whether it be in any other means that the legislature tries to come up with. So with that, I think I'll conclude my remarks and look forward to hearing what you guys are interested in.
Thank you, Representative Orkut. I know we're down to two freshmen from the 18th. I know not only is it ladies first, but you have to leave Representative McClintock at three. So with Representative Cheney's grace, let's go with you next. Go ahead. Yeah, please.
Thank you. Yes, I am Stephanie McClintock from the 18th District. So that's Pilatus, Salmon Creek, North Hazel Dell, North Orchards Battleground area. Freshman, seatmate with Greg here. And day job is Public Affairs for an ag company here in, our export terminal is located at the Port of Vancouver and our corporate office is just a couple blocks away. I serve on three committees. Education, I'm also a former school board member in Battleground. So that's, I enjoy that committee very much. I'm gonna be introducing three bills in that committee this next session. Interested in trying to, to solve the learning loss issues that we have and kind of get back to the basics of reading, writing and math and getting those scores up because our kids are falling behind. I've got two sons. One just finished school in June with an AA in welding program, AA degree and a welding certifications. And then my other son will finish his final, final tomorrow from WSUV. So I'm very happy that he'll be done with college. Let's see what else. I'm also Assistant Ranking on Capital Budget, so I'm really interested in knowing what your priorities are as far as what your, what your funding needs are and see how I can help. I obviously want to help Southwest Washington bring money here. I'd rather it be here and if it doesn't come here, it's gonna go to Seattle. So, and then I'm also Assistant Ranking on Consumer Protection and Business. I'm a former small business owner, so have a little bit of background there as well. So, but yeah, just to echo what Rep. Orkut said, I'm interested in hearing from you guys and what's going on. And I'm really thankful that we're having this meeting to get together and meet you all. So I think that'll be really helpful and beneficial in building our relationship and, helping me at least know what you need and so I could advocate for you. Thank you.
Representative Cheney, thanks.
Thanks. Greg Cheney, 18th Legislative District. I'll, I'll try to be just succinct. Most relevant, I think, to this group and the agenda, I serve on the Judiciary Committee. I serve as ranking member on the State Government Committee and I serve on the Controlled Substances Committee and one other committee that is for some reason, oh, Capital Budget with Stephanie, of course. I also serve on a couple of relevant working groups. I serve on the Intergovernmental Task Force for the Courts. That basically is the court system and the state legislature. I'm the Republican Designated House Member on that to talk about programmatic issues such as due judges for Clark County, where they go, et cetera, et cetera. I also serve on the Public Defense Working Group, which is basically prosecutors, the courts and defense attorneys to try to figure out how to keep qualified attorneys so we don't run into constitutional problems. Keep and retain qualified public defense attorneys. And I don't know if Clark County, I'd be curious to know if Clark County is in that lawsuit that the county's filed or is a member of that lawsuit because that could have some ramifications. Finally, talking about jails, I serve on, or served on the jails task force and work group. Could talk a little bit about that, but I'm concerned, there is a bill coming forward about jail standards. I know Rick Bishop was on that task force as well. I believe, not Sheriff Shuck, I'm not, I don't know what his title, Dave Shuck, sorry, I don't know his title. I was, was involved in some of those discussions as well and I'm, I'm, I am, have not seen the bill come out of that task force, but I am significantly concerned based on some of the recommendations that were voted out of that task force. I'll give just a brief example of that. One of the recommendations was to make sure every inmate has 90 minutes of effectively video chat time per day. Well, for a jail the size of Clark County, you'd have to run 25 iPads 24 hours a day with 25 individual rooms for privacy purposes. That's not workable in any form or fashion. So I remain very concerned about some of the recommendations that came out of that work group. We'll see what the bill looks like. If there is a streamlined bill, maybe there'll be bipartisan support, but we'll see how broad or narrow that study bill is. I, I would note that we were able to get $100,000 for jail facility study. We recognize the facility issue across the state. I think there's some models out there that we could look at. Public Works Board type of formulations that might work for jails or might work more expansively for, for public facilities, but I think those are ongoing conversations that aren't likely from the sense that I have anyway, to be, to be short session conversations, those are probably geared towards a long session conversation in the next couple of years. So I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Great, thank you, everyone. So I think the, the next thing on our agenda is just to provide a few updates on some previous legislative action that the delegation has taken for the county. And so we just wanted to, you know, give a few details on, on what has happened since, since the last session. And so I think we'll kick it off with a little bit of discussion of what the county's been doing related to standing up our public defense office, moving from a contractor model to having our own in-house indigent defense services. And so I'll let Amber take the lead on talking about that.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. I'm Amber Emery. I'm the Deputy County Manager for Clark County. Sorry, I'm sitting behind all of you and nice to see you all. Nice to see you, Senator Wilson. It's been a while since I've seen you. So we are transitioning from a contract model public defense, so indigent defense contract model. We were the largest state, largest county in the state that still had that model that we've been working on for the last couple decades. So we are transitioning to a public defense office in 2024. Our council approved the foundational funding for the office in December. So we will be hiring a director here shortly and looking at ways with council in January of creating some independence with that office, which is one of the foundational purposes for that office to be as independent as we can under the, under the council and county management. So we will be looking at that and transitioning to that area. We understand that's a very, as you were talking about, pressure area that we have right now in our law and justice arena. Public defense across the state is feeling, across the nation really is feeling enormous pressures. We had a letter go on November 27th to the Supreme Court from the Washington State Department of Public Defense to talk about the pressures that the Washington State's facing with the public defense offices. So we will be looking at establishing that and moving forward in setting up our county office with the public defense.
Awesome, thanks, Amber.
I noticed is, I noticed is the same topic is on the list with county legislative priority areas of focus in the second grouping there where it's indigent defense and public safety. So probably additional folks have been thinking on, in those terms. So maybe we could create some linkages there.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I think that's absolutely true and, you know, what Counselor Medvedje was saying earlier and Representative Cheney as well, related to jail standards. I know that Director Shuck is following that really closely as, as are a lot of folks at, at the county. And, you know, our aging infrastructure is also something that, you know, the county may not be able to tackle alone. And so, so I think you're absolutely right, Chair, that there are gonna be some linkages there. And so I'll just kind of briefly continue with, with the rest of these, these updates here and then we can move on to some of our, our areas of focus. And I want to give our, our counselors time to, to chat about their thoughts as well. But just wanted to, to thank the delegation for keeping funding in transportation package for the 179th Street Connector Project. I know that was something that happened last session and that a lot of effort went into. And so appreciative on that. And I, my understanding is the design phase portion of the, the project got underway this summer from the, from the county side. And so over the next few years, they'll be working with, you know, the county piece on some of the arterial roads and then Wash Dot will be working on the interchange itself. And so that is, that's starting to move along. Then the, the next update I have for you is related to Vancouver Lake and budget proviso that was put in place to get the lake management plan created for Vancouver Lake. And so we are happy to say that that lake management plan has been completed. And we have our county clean water staff beginning to work, talking to different stakeholders, looking at releasing an RFP for the actual management of the lake moving forward. So now that we have the plan drafted and I think the, the scope of work is being written right now with the hope to, early in 2024, release that RFP to begin the implementation of the lake management plan. And that would include treatments, an aldeide in the lake, trying to reduce those algal blooms, scoping and permitting feasibility and conceptual design of the flushing channel enlargement, which is kind of a long-term goal to, to help get water circulating between the Columbia and Vancouver Lake. Noxious weed management and then watershed management as well. IDing, you know, where sources of pollution are coming into the lake from, you know, as the Senator was saying, you know, there's, there's humans, there's dogs, there's livestock. We have aging stormwater infrastructure throughout the watershed. And specifically, there are a lot of issues, I guess, with geese at the, the swimming portion of the lake. If you've ever been to the lake in the summer, you'll, you'll have seen a lot of geese, you know, milling about there. And so I think that also contributes to the nutrient loading in the lake. And so that, that's moving along as well. So we, we thank you for your work on that. And then finally, there was some funding last year that was provided for the Salmon Creek Regional Park and the, the bridge at Kleinline Pond for some bridge and ADA improvements. And I don't have a specific update on, on where that's at currently, but I know that it is projected to have that work start next year to, to get that actually implemented. So, so some of the things that this delegation has been working on for us previously are starting to come to fruition. And so just wanted to let you know what's been happening on some of those key issues that we've had in the past couple of years. Yeah, any, any questions from, from folks on that before we move?
I have a question. Several people mentioned the importance to their legislative priorities of the I-5 Bridge. And of course, we concur with that completely and, and, you know, have stated that we, even with the emphasis on a third corridor, it is I-5 Bridge first and foremost because that's, that's the way the priority is set right now and, and needs to get done. What can we do as a county to facilitate What can we do as a county to facilitate your efforts in the legislature in that regard on I-5? It seems like, you know, there are more than just speeches to give.
Okay. Okay, there is a lot, okay, there was a lot of echo there. You know, I would just say that if there's a way to participate in some of these, just as a, just to watch and see how some of these side groups are having discussions and what those discussions entail. I don't have the bandwidth. I don't think any of us that are on this council actually has the bandwidth to be able to take, you know, watch or hear what's happening in these other meetings. Like I said before, I was, I'm a little concerned with this new community benefits advisory group. I know there's people that are on that that are also on the executive committee. But to try to start leveraging the IBR program with trails and parks and buildings just to commemorate the bridge, it just doesn't seem like that's what we should be doing when we're trying to build the bridge. So, I mean, this is just one group that I, it just popped up. I don't know where the authority was to create the group to begin with. And so there, I have concerns here. And so I think if we can be paying attention to how these happen or, and I don't know every, I don't know who's on what committee here that attends, which committee? I don't know which, who, how, who's on this related to the county council. So I think it's just, you know, I think talking to us, if you guys hear anything that is concerns of you, same with me. I would like to know if there's, because you guys are here around all the time, where we're not so much involved directly. You know, we're in Olympia and things happen. We're having a meeting on Friday. I think attending those and just being very aware of what's going on. You know, and Ms. Bowerman, I'm trying to think your first name.
Right, it's Karen.
That's right, Karen Bowerman, that's sorry. I, oh, never mind, never mind. I guess that's it, that's all I need to say.
We will do that. We don't have official representation, but unofficial is constant. And we can do that. Thank you.
Chair, Chair, it's Councillor Belkot. I'm actually on the Regional Poll Committee for the council. I was just in a meeting this morning that ODOT didn't advertise. I've asked them to give me the meeting minutes and the PowerPoint slides because I was concerned about that. Anytime a third corridor is mentioned, they shut us down. Anytime we question polling, we get the runaround. There's several commissioners in Oregon and mayors in Oregon who are very unhappy with the whole process. And just recently, I was, myself and Councillor Medvedje are in the Regional Transportation Committee. I mentioned a third corridor, I got shut down pretty much. But I did make my comments and I justified why I was requesting the third corridor. If you go into any major city anywhere, I've lived in lots of different cities, being in the military, all over the place, the infrastructure that we currently have compared to the population, it doesn't make sense. So Senator Wilson, I'll plan on having further communication about that with you. That'd be great.
Can I also just, if I might, before we go too far down this, but this is an important community topic, obviously. So Senator Wilson, you asked a very specific question, which I think was a good one, about coordination between the delegation and the county. Does the county have, Councillor Belkot, you and Councillor Medvedje are involved, obviously. Are there county staff or other individuals that are following all the subgroups to the Interstate Bridge Committee? Okay. Thanks. Yeah.
Go ahead, Senator Cleveland.
Thank you very much. And I'm actually wanting to ask a question regarding a different topic, but so happy to wait in the event that there's more to discuss around this topic. I will certainly, I will speak to this topic really briefly and share that, you know, in the years that the delegation has been working together on this shared goal to replace the I-5 Bridge, given that the one spans well over 100 years old now, we have worked really hard to be inclusive, to hear all voices, to ensure that we are hearing from all perspectives. And so if there's a concern that, that you're not feeling heard or don't feel your concerns or questions are being adequately addressed, I am quite happy to carry that forward to the I-5 Bridge Replacement Project Office and staff and ensure that, that you have the opportunity to share your productive feedback and have your questions answered. So please know that's a, that's a standing offer to help in any way that I can. So my question was actually in regard to the Vancouver Lake and really appreciate the excellent update. And so pleased that the lake management plan's completed, that you're going to be issuing your RFP shortly to hire someone then for the actual implementation of the plan. My question is around the funding. As you know, we were able to secure funding from the state operating budget for this initial lake management plan development. And I'm just curious to know whether that funding is helping you to go forward with the RFP and with the hiring of someone to manage the lake next year. And then just curious to know when you might feel that you need additional funding in the future. So just want to think about further out. Obviously, this year, 2024's legislative session is a short session supplemental budget year, but wanting to start thinking about 2025 and whether there might be a need for additional.
So if I could just give you my thoughts on it. So first and foremost, if you haven't noticed, we're really paying a lot of attention to our watershed health, all of them. And they need a lot of restoration work, whether it's for salmon recovery or just having clean water. Our own Clean Water Division has really been bolstered. We have great capacity in Public Works now. And we actually poached from Ecology, their regional director now works for our Clean Water. I think we're ready for the next step. We had the consultant do the work, pretty much identified all the different paths to move forward. We just recently had a meeting sponsored through Senator Mary's office with the Corps of Engineers. And as expected, they're really seeing it not as their mission and are doing everything they can to say everything's fine from our point of view because it doesn't involve navigation and we don't want to touch it. But, so the EPA, Clean Water, are now taking a harder look. There's so much work to be done. We need more of a proviso focus on the flushing channel, focus on who will step up, you know, between Vancouver, the port, the Clark County. You know, we need either the county or someone else to step up and take the lead on the management. And everything's interconnected. And you mentioned septic systems, you know, and I know that's a statewide problem, but it impacts Vancouver Lake. And we have over 1,100 homes on septic systems right now in Vancouver, in the urban area of the unincorporated area that could be, right now, connected to our sewer system. But there's, you know, they don't want to do it because it's so costly and there's, you know, grants and loans. People just don't want to do it until they're forced to. So we're waiting until the system actually fails before the city of Vancouver or the county can have some jurisdiction to say, well, we're not giving you a permit because you can hook up. Here's, so if there could be a funding mechanism, that would help to get these households. Our regional wastewater treatment facility has the capacity. They've planned out into the future. It's well-run and they know they could get these folks hooked up if we only had a state initiative to kind of push the issue. So a lot of work going done, going on in Lacamas Lake, same issues with the watershed. We're waiting on Ecology to come up with their report. That's been going on for a couple of years now, studying pandemic put them behind. And we need lake management for Lacamas Lake as well. It does take state help between DNR, Ecology, Fish and Wildlife, you name it. It's, it's all on deck, hands-on. So if you can come up with a proviso, we could use it. We will figure out a way to make sure it gets appropriately spent, just as the last one was.
Rep Cheney has got a question or a comment?
Yeah, just a quick comment. You know, we were able to get that Wallace Heights subdivision money, but the point is well taken. And I want to thank Sharon. I think we did that in a bipartisan way between capital budget and Sharon's leadership on that issue. But your point's well taken. You know, maybe there'll be money for further expansions because you're right, it's going into that watershed. Wallace Heights is certainly there. I know Representative Wiley has it on her radar. Stephanie and I are watching it from the Capital Budget Committee on our radar as well.
Can I go, just circle back? So I wanted to make a comment on a corridor. You know, I also have lived elsewhere and coming, I hadn't been to Portland since Mount St. Helens had erupted. I come cross-country to sneak into the prohibited area to take photographs, thinking I was a good budding artist with the camera, but I wasn't. Anyway, we are so far behind. And if we don't plan on a third quarter, we're never, we're never going to be able to afford the rights of way necessary. There is, and in response to Michelle Belkot's comment at the RTC, that was my last meeting to chair that meeting, the reality is Oregon's not talking about it at any level. And we can't do anything for planning in Clark County in southwest Washington unless we have a partner south of the river or west of the river, wherever that other corridor goes. But we need another corridor. You know, we're just going to, ultimately, if you look at past examples across the country of bad planning, what you end up doing is bulldozing neighborhoods. When you finally come to the conclusion, we need another tunnel. We need another bridge. So we are 20 years behind on planning. If we had an earnest effort right now, and now's the time because we're going through our comp plan update. So from our local transportation, where it could hook up, it's a good time to start planning on another corridor. If, but we need state leadership. We need federal leadership because we don't have Oregon really stepping up. So whatever you can do to get that conversation going, because we are so far behind. And if we took a proactive step tomorrow towards planning, it would be another 20 years before we had the discussion that you're having now on the I-5 Bridge. So any help you can give on a third quarter would be really appreciated. I see Senator Wilson's got a hand raised.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Gary, I've been running that bill for three years now, I think, to just look at the, begin the discussions for the third bridge. So you're exactly right. If we don't start talking about it now, it's going to be another 50 years before another bridge's built because you can tell how long it's taking to get this one moving. So it has, well, it's never gotten out of the Senate. So it pretty much dies in the Transportation Committee. I think Annette has signed on to that bill with me. So we all recognize that needs to be have that discussion. So I don't know what we can do to push this through because you're right, we need to, we need to have this discussion.
Can we have someone testify? I followed that bill that you mentioned until its death, which I was pretty sad to see. But is there anything that we can do as a county to support that in legislature?
We've been supporting it. Oh, go ahead. Sorry, Senator.
I was just going to say Senator Cleveland is on the Transportation Committee, at least in the Senate. And I think it's just a matter of convincing the chair that we need to have this discussion and move forward with it. It's not a lot of money. I think it's like $300,000 just to get the discussion going to, you know, get the, get the meeting or the group together. So I don't know if Senator Cleveland can chat with Senator Leas again a couple of times or something to move that forward? I don't know.
Yeah, I have talked to Senator Leas and I'll continue to talk to him. As you all know, you know, we're facing some pretty big challenges in terms of just our maintenance and operation needs and finding the funding to maintain the roads and bridges that we have in addition to the new projects that we funded in the Connecting Washington package. So, you know, it's just a matter of trying to find the funding to meet all of the various needs. And I certainly agree that study of our additional needs in the future and where a third corridor might make sense is something I support.
We were all so grateful, as you can imagine, when we saw this come through again this year. And we thought, oh, it's going to make it this year. And then, and then it doesn't. And it's not for lack of trying, right, Josh? So what is it that, is it one-on-one conversations with the chair that would explain the importance of this to the area or what? What would be effective?
Absolutely. I'd encourage one-on-one conversations with not just the Senate Transportation Committee Chair and members, but the House as well. And, and, you know, again, we're just working hard to address the urgent, emergent needs as well as future needs. And we just have to do our best to prioritize and balance those.
Representative Orketz got a comment here.
So I was just going to put the need for a third bridge into perspective. If you look at Kales County, population 100,000, 110,000, we've got five bridges across Kales River, total of eight lanes in each direction. You look at Clark County, I-5, I-205, there's seven lanes. And the population's what, around 600,000 in this county? And if you include the Portland metro area, we've got more lanes for 110,000 people across the Kales River than we do across the Columbia River in Clark County. That should put it into perspective and how great the need is for a third crossing.
Rep Harris, I see you. Representative Wiley's in line next.
Thank you. The need for additional pathway across the river is not, has been on the table for a really long time. My understanding is that Bob Schaefer from, who's now passed on at almost 100 years old, when he was Speaker of the House, he put a lot of energy into trying to find that future corridor. And that was before we had the density that we have. And there has been a lot of talk about expanding the bridge in Longview that goes over, over the Columbia because it's more doable. It would connect roughly to several ports and could, and it has someplace to land. We made a policy decision when we developed the last transportation package to try very, very hard to pay more attention to maintenance and operation, take care of what we have, and be really, really strategic about what, what new things we fund. And I think we did a really good job. And we did a big listening session all over, every corner of the state. I think it was 100 meetings, all online. I developed, we all developed a syndrome called bench butt. It was a long, long time spent listening to people and then taking that to heart. So there is agreement amongst a lot of people that that would make sense because the corridor, a new corridor with no place to land would be horrendously expensive. And they couldn't do it like And they couldn't do it like 40, 50 years ago. They couldn't get it done then. And, and it was visionary and it made sense. Finishing what we have is going to be a real challenge. The projects that are under construction right now have escalated between 20 and 40% increase in their, in their cost. And there's always wiggle room built into those estimates. And right now, the effort is trying to figure out how to keep, how to keep those promises and how to keep those projects on track. And my personal hope, and I'm no longer doing the budget cabinet because I'm chairing a committee, I'm not on that, in that group, is that there are, there are some trades that can be made with the carbon tax. There, that one's very constrained and, and people that are careful about taxes always have a hard time making them flexible. Everything's designated and that's, that's where the support is and that's where promises are. But for things that would be eligible for that funding, I'm hoping there's a way of, of swapping some of that out. And I'm hoping prices will go down as the economies of the world and resources shift. Because a lot of the increase in, the problems with supply and costs may somewhat be temporary. They won't go down a lot, but they, you know, there may be other things that, that can happen. And so there's a whole lot of people smarter than I am that are paying attention to that. But first things first, get, get the bridge, you know? And there will, there will always be a lot of people saying that it would be nice if it had this. It would be pretty if it had that. We are very much paying attention to function and very aware that the people on the other side of the river have a stake in this too, and compromises are going to have to be made.
Rep Harris, did you still have a comment or a question? I see Senator Wilson.
Just, I think, I think almost all of us want a third bridge. I, I just find it fascinating that we've got to get the I-5 bridge built, realizing that we're, as we sit in the IBR meetings, the tax structure in, in Oregon is certainly not yielding what the state of Washington is yielding. Just watching what they've gone through to, to fund the I-5 bridge is rather staggering to see what the state of Oregon has had to do. So I, I'm hoping that when we get along further into this process, that we can have that dialogue with them. Because I think we actually have to get Oregon to be, to agree with us. I mean, we, we need to have that dialogue with them. I think we're forming some relationships and some talking is taking place now that's never taken before. But the Oregon tax structure is certainly different than ours and they're having difficulty raising money, which we have not. And so I think that's a big concern on my end, at least watching Oregon and, and, but I do appreciate the dialogue we're having now, which is far more open than it's ever been before.
Thank you, Representative. Go ahead, Senator Wilson.
Uh, thanks, Josh. I just wanted to say, you know, in the very beginning or seven years ago, when I was put on this committee, we had to prove to Oregon that we were being serious, right? Because of the issues that happened with the CRC. And so we're past that now and we do, we are seeming to work well together. But there isn't any reason why we couldn't be having a parallel conversation about a third bridge. Because it should be somehow incorporated. I understand there's now tunnels and things going on that are going to be happening over in Oregon. And if we're going to ever have a third bridge, we're going to need to know what they're doing as well. And they need to be serious. And as Representative Wiley, I've never been included in any of these conversations that you're talking about, about how someone down in Long, thinks the Longview Bridge would be better to, to work on that. I, I've never been involved, so I'm not sure who these people are that you're talking about. So I think it would be, um, you know, it would behoove us to include some of us that have been on this, this bridge, this committee for the I-5 bridge to know what's going on in the peripheral so that we're aware. Because again, the conversation can be had and we can take money from the Climate Commitment Act. The governor has already said he's doing that in his budget, taking that, a good chunk of that out and putting it toward capital budget, a good portion of it even more than what's going to the transportation budget. So maybe we need to be looking at moving more to transportation if we have so many dire needs in maintenance and operation, as well as a very small amount to be talking about a third bridge.
So Jordan, I'm not sure what you're thinking, but I, I would think we should do a check-in here. We've been covering sort of updates and we got into the bridge. This has been a good conversation, I think, from my observation of you all for the last several years. We plan on going into some of the other topics that the county is really wanting to put a priority on for this session. Does that still seem like a good use of time? I know there's, we've talked some about infrastructure, indigent defense, lake management. We haven't really talked about housing homelessness. Are we ready to move on to that? Yeah. I think from, this is just me speaking. I think this conversation that we're having, however, develops has been a lot more important than making sure we hit certain bullet points. So let's do, move to the next section, it seems like. And I'm not sure who you guys had teed up to talk about housing homelessness.
I'll, I'll kick it off just, just briefly and then I'll turn it over to our counselors to, to give their perspective. But, you know, obviously, you know, housing affordability, incentivizing development are areas that, that the county is, is really interested in. And in particular, Clark County is in an interesting position because we have such a large urban growth area around Vancouver, you know, more than many other counties. Clark County is providing more urban services and, you know, required to, to work in more urban settings. One thing that I, I have heard from our community development folks is, you know, HB 1110 that was passed last year supporting middle housing and cities have the opportunity to apply for, for funding to support development of middle housing. You know, there's a curiosity whether that can be expanded to counties as well. You know, just given that, you know, if, if you look at the unincorporated growth area of Vancouver, you know, it would be a fairly large city in its own right, if it were its own city. So that's something that we've been hearing. And then something related as well to that is, you know, childcare availability and access as, as part of housing and homelessness, as well as support for, you know, the Washington State Department of Transportation has a program related to clearing encampments. You know, and, and that's been something that's come up several times as, as a, you know, a real danger. You know, you've got folks right on these intersections, you know, who, you know, both for, for drivers and for the folks that are there, it is dangerous. And so any support related to that, that can be provided to the county, have also heard interest around that. And so those are some of the high-level topics that we've been hearing. But I, I'd love to turn it over to the, the counselors to give their perspective and priorities around any policies they're looking at related to housing and homelessness.
Well, again, we want to be a model for, for the state. And anything you're working on that would help us in this regard, the urban areas you described it, we, we have, we have a very large urban area because of the rapid growth in the eighties and we're really trying to play catch-up. But any, any of the housing options that you've been giving the city, we would really like to have as well. I mean, we really are trying to open up the aperture on, on getting more than just single-family homes throughout the county. I mean, we need it everywhere. I, I would tell you, we have two investments that we're making in part through ARPA that, that is directly contributing to affordable housing. One is our mortgage assistance program. And we've already assisted 33 families in buying their first home through that program. That was done with ARPA funds and it's still in progress. But we, we're looking at perhaps expanding that if we can. But the second issue expands beyond that with Vancouver Housing Authority again, Habitat for Humanity, other private developers that focus on affordable housing. They're looking at a program to have it, have affordability go with the land. Basically be filed with the land. We're looking for a way to fund that program. I think it's, it's a great way to directly provide affordable housing to families that otherwise would not, never be able to enter the housing market. And I'll mention a third one, it's still kind of nascent, but we're looking at potentially our excess properties, if we have any, making them available of just for affordable development. You know, putting it on the market, hey, it's excess to the county, but it's going to be restricted for affordable housing. And again, going to run with the land. So we're, we're just starting to talk about some of the partners out in the community for that. And we're going to obviously need a, a funding mechanism, once again, for those private partners and the nonprofits that are going to do the work. So we are, we're looking for options. We want them all. So anything you've done for the cities, we would ask that we at least be given the option as well. No one likes to have Olympia Force Feed, the solution at the local level. But providing options is, is the way to go, so that we can make decisions in community development and the council.
I would just chime in a little bit on affordable housing. One of the things that, you know, the beast that we've created is what I say with affordable housing. I think we have the tendency to prioritize all of the different things that we want and frankly, need to accomplish, but we forget to look at those unintended consequences. And I think housing is a big victim of that. You know, every little thing that we have added to it, every little, you know, energy code, design restrictions, you name it, the impact fees, I mean, it's coming from all fronts. And so in terms of affordable housing, I, I don't know that we have the solution, but I do know that we need to pay attention. I cringe when I hear it, it's only this much. You know, it only impacts by this much, but it's that little bit and that little bit and that little bit and everything that just creates this big pile of money now that it costs to build that housing. So I would just, just say that in, in all your efforts, I appreciate all that you do, just always look to see, you know, how does that impact the housing? And how do we, how do we deal with that? You know, how do we juggle these priorities that we have? We have affordable housing, we also have protecting the environment and climate change that we have to deal with. So how do we balance those? And just do your best to find that right balance, because it, housing is just such a, such an issue for everyone. So I, I'm a housing advocate and, and it, to be honest with you, this is probably one of my biggest frustrations being on the county is seeing how little I can impact it, how little we can actually do. But it was, you know, we were in a meeting the other day talking about how we can reduce the, the timeframe that it can take from plat until permit. And it seems like it's trivial, I mean, they, you know, realistically, the most we can shave off is five days. Five days of interest on all of these projects and all these, you know, houses that we're building. So it's just little steps like that that people are willing to take that make a big contribution. And we got to focus on it, also little steps not creating to the problem in the future. So hopefully that makes sense to you guys.
So you may have the authority now to only shave five days off. But what could we change at the state level that would allow you to shave more days off? What could we do at the state level to allow you to shave off more of the costs? I was recently on a call with the Governor's Council of Economic Advisers and one of them indicated that about $100,000 of the cost of a new home is attributable to regulations and fees. And where, where in there can we do something that will help you to make that process go easier, less restrictive, still provide safe and affordable homes? But, but to bring down that cost and bring that $100,000 down to something much lower?
Well, in Clark County, BIA released recently, I think it was about seven months ago, the cost to build a house without digging a hole is $168,000 to start in Clark County. So a lot of that has to do with the permitting fees, but some of that's driven by the state. So I don't know, DEE would probably be like the best reference. Maybe you, counselor, again?
I would say I'd like-
And I'll just say, I, I understand if you can't answer the question today. It's, it's a question to be thinking about and to work on and to come to us with. Because we don't want to just do a snap judgment and, you know, it, let's, let's think about, let's find real solutions to this and, and really get those costs down.
I think this is why this is so great, because honestly, I've always been thinking about it from the standpoint, what can we change here? So I've never really thought about that. So I appreciate that and I plan to, to work on that.
All right. So I'd like to bump down for a second here to, I know we're getting, what, about 20 minutes left? I can't quite see. But we do have a couple of specific requests from our partners that the county is supporting that I, that I did want to bring up in this forum as well. The first is, is the one that Counselor Medvedje mentioned earlier, which is that Ridgefield I-5 Connection Project. They've already received state transportation funding to, to do some of the initial design phase. But they would really, you know, their, their ongoing request is for, for $5 million to do a lot of the, the permitting and, and initial legwork on there. So I know that we sent a letter to the delegation, but I know that the, the county council would strongly, strongly ask that you consider that, that request. It's, you know, Ridgefield is the fastest growing city in the state. And, you know, related to the bridge conversation that we had before and things like that, there's really a need to bring the infrastructure in line with the growth of the county. So just wanted to-
So I did receive that letter, I'm sure we all received it. And just to let you know, I, I actually visited with Steve Stewart on my way down here today at Ridgefield and that was one of the topics we talked about. We also have a meeting with him, a breakfast with him Friday morning, where we'll be talking about this more.
Thank you.
Wonderful. And then just the second thing I would bring up is we've had the, City of Battleground has asked for funding to support the acquisition of their Battleground Healthcare Clinic building. And so the county has already supported that project in a couple of different ways. The county has provided, I think about $200,000 of, of ARPA funding specifically for the building, as well as about $75,000 to support staffing at the clinic through the first six months of 2023. And so, you know, the county is really behind this, this project. And I think we'll be sending you all a letter supporting that as well. But, but wanted to note that that is something that the county does support too.
Yeah, Greg Cheney. Yeah, Stephanie McQuintock and I are very aware of that, watching it on the capital budget side. We talked Battleground about that. I know, I've been, I've known those people for years and, and it's something that we're, we're carefully watching.
And then I, we've talked, we've, we kind of have gone all over this agenda. I think we've talked about most of, most of the topics, just some other high-level things that I would note or reiterate, you know, is, is state support for, for moving from the contract model to the in-house indigent defense model. I know that we're not the, the only county dealing with that. Similarly, you know, with our aging jail infrastructure and the upcoming jail standards would really, we're very interested in that. We'll be following that closely and would love to be in dialogue with, with all of you on that. I think Senator Cleveland asked a question earlier related to the funding for the lake management plan implementation. I believe that there is funding from the proviso for the first year of the implementation plan. And that's what we'll be using to, to fund the initial scope of work in that RFP that I mentioned earlier. But on, on an ongoing basis, both for our, our lake management and for the overall watershed, as Counselor Medvedje and others noted, that's, that's going to be expensive. And so we'd love to, to be in dialogue with that, with all of you and, and focus on any solutions that we can find for that.
Could I add a, a couple of things to what embedded in what Jordan just mentioned? So we did just in our budget approve money for an additional- we did just in our budget approve money for an additional judge. That'll have to be approved by the legislature and then we'll get to the supporting positions, JA and clerk and things like that. But, please. Yes, a superior court judge.
Just to add to that, the, the state Supreme Court, it's an AOC priority bill. And I don't know, Senator Wilson, if you're running it, or we'll, we'll figure it out, but it's an AOC priority bill. They're on, you know, they, they want to make sure that Clark County is taken care of.
Yeah, we're getting, we're on the precipice of really starting to fall behind on the judgeships and the number of filings they have. I mean, we're, we're amongst the worst in the state as far as the data. But I want to mention, you know, with our public defense, there's other needs as you look at law and justice, unrepresented litigants for one. You know, there, there's, there's widespread need throughout the state for, to keep on track with, with our defense services, whether it's in family law or criminal. There's a lot of need out there and, and we can't get behind on this. Otherwise, we're going to experience what Oregon did with their public defense system essentially collapsing. So I just wanted to throw those in as well.
Go ahead, Senator Wilson.
I just wanted to let you know, Gary, that bill was dropped on Monday. So the bill number is 5836 to add Superior Court Judge.
Super. Thanks. You guys are quick.
Of all of our conversation, there's one question that just has been like a neon light to me, and that's the one that you dropped a bit ago. What can the state do to cut costs from 100K for affordable housing? Wow. And I think about how a good list for that could be made. And it isn't something that our council would just sit down and, and write up. There are so many experts who deal with this regularly, who would be of assistance and help. And man, let's get them to, to work with us on that because we could give you a good list if we put our, our minds to it. And what an important question. Thank you for bringing it up and giving us a little bit of time to put something good together.
So it sounds like we're starting to wind down or run out of energy, but I, I would be remiss if I didn't bring up one thing. And so you, I've met with some of you over the years, one-on-one to discuss this topic, and it, it's been quieted or muted since the pandemic because we completely lost the ability to forecast. So I know there's been ongoing efforts with the tax reform task force to look at different ways to tax in Washington State. And I know that that is among the hardest work that you guys can do. But we are, so I want to bring it up again because we're going to take another look at our level. We're in the absolute worst place in all of Washington State because of the tax disparity that Paul mentioned earlier, in our sales tax loss. So the structure that the state enjoys as well as it does, we are always hobbled. And whether it's 10% or 25% of a loss of our sales tax revenue, you mentioned costs for building affordable homes, you know, a lot of construction material and, and gravel and concrete even are being purchased in Oregon. We're losing all that sales tax. You know, so we're, we're trying to revisit the idea of how do we forecast what we're losing? And it could be 10 million, 25 million or more per year in lost sales tax. You know, Washington State did a study and we are amongst the worst in the country for tax disparities and a loss of our ability to collect sales tax. So we're going to hopefully revisit that idea in the future because we are just, if we take advantage of every ability we have to raise taxes, we still can't fill the hole that we lose to sales tax, loss to Oregon.
So I think you're right, Counselor Medvedje, that we're starting to wind down, but I do think, and, and many of the legislators mentioned their priorities for the session in the opening comments, but we do have space at the bottom for just anything, I guess, anything that wasn't covered before that in particular that you could use the county's help on this session. That would be, from my perspective, a good question as we wrap up.
So I understand we're on track with our Southwest Washington Law Enforcement Academy, and we look forward, that's going to pay dividends across all of Southwest Washington in so many ways. We've pretty much hired against our sheriff's open vacancies as well as our, our jail. And so now it's a matter of getting them trained where they can have a real impact out on the streets and be properly certified. I just want to put in a pitch that we do this as often as you're willing and capable throughout the short session because I miss our time together before the pandemic.
I think Senator Cleveland was first. I see you represent, Joni, and I know you have to leave. Go ahead, Senator.
Thank you, Josh. I'll be quick. I just want to add on to what was just shared and mention again that you, the delegation worked very collaboratively toward the Public Safety Regional Training Center and just really pleased to know that the temporary facility will be up and running and the first class will begin in January. So really, we're nimble and flexible in bringing that to fruition quickly. So thank you to everybody on the call. Also want to mention, at last Friday, at the Southwest Washington Shared Business Community Legislative Priorities for 2024, one of the priorities that was highlighted was the need to create a correctional facilities modernization fund to address aging infrastructure and systems. And that was something that I highlighted when we heard that identified as a priority. And I was just curious as to whether you'll be supportive of that and, and whether you had input into that particular priority.
Or especially our deputy manager. We've put funds towards capital planning for our jail. We are moving forward. We're going to, so yes, we'd be 100% supportive and there's certainly regional jails and other local jails throughout the state that need state help in this regard. You know, we don't need standards. We've already got standards. We don't need oversight. We need help getting our, our facilities to where they should be happy and healthy and safety, safe for the, not only the inmates, but those correctional officers that are there. I think that's a great idea. I look forward to that bill.
Rep. Donier?
Thanks. Thank you all for this important conversation and timely one. I am going to run here in a minute. I thought I'd see Senator Braun at the Spokane GSI event where I'm representing my caucus, but it looks like he did the same thing the speaker did, which is handed off to someone else. So that's where I'm going to be heading in a moment. But I do just want to answer your question about how, how we could partner. Glad to see the county pass the 1%. That's a long time coming. And I appreciate the last time, I think we all met in the county office, it was council member.
Quiarin?
Nope. Dang it. I was just talking about her the other day, who, who highlighted our sentiment as legislators from both sides of the aisle that Clark County coming to the table with those resources builds better partnership. And that was, that was right and it is true today. So I want to share my gratitude to you all for that. We have behavioral health crisis and beds in our community have shut down. And I know that Representative Cheney and Representative Harris and several of us have been following this very closely. It's compressing, it's compressing and having a huge barrier on the system, not only statewide, but locally here in our community. And that just means that folks close to home can't get care close to home. And so whatever the county can do to continue to advocate for how important it is to have access to behavioral health and residential care here in the community makes a great deal of, makes a big difference for us when we're advocating for that. It's real hard to, to deliver on something we know is good for the community and then see folks respond negatively to, to that action. So your partnership in that is huge. And then one thing I'll just flag for you, which is probably not for this legislative session, but down the road, we have seen a, a number of local school boards, city councils and across the nation legislatures have their technology kind of, use the security usurp so that some folks can get into your county meetings and your council meetings and show up on the screen by getting around the security measures. So that's just one way, that's one symptom of a bigger problem. So hopefully you're taking a look at what the long-term needs are at the county to secure the private information and the government operations of our Clark County folks. So that's been top of my mind. And so I wanted to raise that as something you, you as a county and we as a legislative delegation might need to talk about down the road. Thank you so much for this and I really miss seeing y'all. So I'm going to head out, but thanks for the conversation.
Go ahead, Senator Braun. Thank you, Representative.
There we go. All right. Well, thank you. Thanks for having us all here. I've been maybe noticeably quiet during this because I haven't, as I said earlier, we, I haven't represented this much of Clark County before, so I thought I should start by listening. I've learned a lot during the, this afternoon's event. So, but what you ask how you could, you know, to talk about priorities, maybe how you could help. I'd just share is, for the Senate Republicans, and I won't go into the details because we don't have a lot of time, but you know, we're focused on public safety, we're focused on affordability, we're focused on creating a better future for our kids. And that goes from childcare to early education to K-12, higher ed, foster care, juvenile justice. So there's a lot of things there and not all of them are affected. You know, does the county affect directly? But you're, you're, at the very least tangentially connected to virtually all of them. So my ask is this, as you experiment in Clark County and you find something that works, share those ideas with us. And I'll give you a couple of things I think you might focus on. One is we've talked about the, the Regional Criminal Justice Training Center and the impact that should have on both Clark County and the surrounding municipalities building their law enforcement back up. You've heard, so you may have heard some of us talk about the fact that Washington is the la, is the, is the worst in the country in terms of law enforcement per capita. We, lots, a lot of things go into that. It was like that before the pandemic. It got worse during that pandemic. We're all trying to build back. But I think that with the regional justice, with the Regional Training Center, you have a, a chance to set the stage for how it can be built back. And, and, and I would suggest a goal to you, you have to set your own. But my suggestion is, and this is for both Clark County and the state, is we ought to be shooting to be at least the middle of the pack nationwide. As you, you know, whatever goal you adopt to try to build back our law enforcement officers, both in quantity and quality, tell us the type of things that are working for you and the things that are standing in your way. We heard loud and clear, the training was standing in your way. I think you saw us react bipartisan, in a bipartisan manner to try to fix that. Tell us what's next and how you get there, whether it's, it's funding. I know you got some vacant positions that need to be filled first, but once it, you know, once it gets to funding for more positions, tell us that. Tell us anything that's standing in the way. How do we get to a law enforcement, or, you know, cadre in our state or in this case in particular, Clark County, that keeps our citizens safe? That's one example. I heard some really interesting stuff yesterday from the City of Vancouver about homelessness. Maybe you have your own examples of what you're doing there or in other places, but share those best ideas with us because with those ideas, we can help bring state resources, not just to our community, the communities we represent, but hopefully across the state to make, to improve the problem. Because as you know, none of these problems, they stop existing at the city, you know, state limits line or the county line. They, they go across the state. Our goal, of course, is focused on the communities we represent, but we want to solve it for everybody if we can. So that's my ask of you. I really appreciate, again, I really appreciate being here this evening. I learned a ton and I appreciate you doing this. I hope you do it more in the future.
Thank you.
Thanks, Senator. We appreciate that. And I think we're wrapping up. I'm not sure who's wrapping this up, but I will say that I really do appreciate everyone's time. I know this is the time of year when you guys are just doing this day after day after day because I've been in some of the, because I've been in some of those meetings with you and we just really do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Bye-bye. And thanks to you too, Josh.